Okay, good evening, Zoom, Zoom audience. We started our meeting at 6:30, went into a closed session for advice of counsel. And then we had two executive sessions after that. And we just left the last executive session.
You're not admitted?
Excuse me?
I'm having technical difficulties. Okay, we're good.
Okay. We weren't good before, so should I repeat what I've said?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry to hear you.
That we were in, I saw people there, so thought we're good. Okay, so again, welcome everyone Zoom world. We started off our meeting at 6:30, went into a closed session to seek advice of counsel. And then we had two short executive sessions, one on collective negotiations and the other employment history of an individual. And now we're back on our agenda, point number three. One thing I would like to do is if everyone would agree, I'd like to make a motion to table the request, number five, request purchase property of 45 Fair Street tonight.
For what reason?
Because I would like to have more time with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I've looked at it, I can't get my head around it, so I'm fine with that.
So I need a second.
A second, a second motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we go back up to update on the garbage bid. Included Jeff has put a spreadsheet, we put, we put the garbage and recyclable out to bid. And these were, the numbers on the screen are what was returned, Royal Karting was the lowest bidder. And you can see that in column three, year one, and then there's the years after that. So it starts at 190, 195, 201. So we've done a quick analysis, and Michelle had done this earlier for us when we started this years ago, to see how close we could get. But we never had numbers to punch in, and now we do, and we can see how close we are. So it's even with the recycling and refus, and then even if you included a brush and also the Sunday morning pickup, which we, from our conversations, did not think that Royal would actually do Sunday morning, but they've bid on it, so apparently they will. So we're covered for everything now, there's Christmas trees are for free, and the other companies were 5,000 each. And there is also an add-on, if you wanted to do a bulk village pickup, I think it's 7,000 somewhere down there lower. Anyway, so we're not definitely, I'm gonna be making any decisions in our, my term, that's for sure. But these are the numbers we have to work with from Michelle's analysis, we're like, Ed, the village spends, I believe it was like 180,000, close to. With everything considered. And I think if we included everything from Royal, we're up to 220, that correct? I don't have the numbers.
Oh, 181 on the village total and 209 was the Royal total.
So this is a much closer gap than we had into it. And that's why Maureen and I never followed through with anything on that, because we thought it was gonna be much more expensive than this. So I would, just my, my personal opinion is, you know, we can tighten all the numbers up and have Michelle weigh in for sure, I'm sure that'll be needed. But I think it's well, having dealt with the highway and garbage over the last seven years, for the village to go out and to contract this out. It relieves a lot of pressure on our highway crew, it gives our highway crew, I think 30 to 40% more time actually doing what they should be doing. We don't have to worry about trucks and CDL is less of an importance, although we probably need a CDL for our dump trucks. But you know, right now, if Bugsy's out, well, right now we have it covered, but it can get to a position, and it has in the past where Bugsy was the only one with a CDL. And then what do you do with garbage? And then you have to hire out, or if a truck breaks down as we have, and that's expensive.
So. Well, and earlier today, it seemed as if Michelle provided some reasonable alternatives for making up the gap. One was not hiring the mechanic. We have not had a mechanic on staff.
That was budgeted for, and we did not hire a mechanic.
Right. And the other was, I mean, it sounded like the critical element was holding it, holding it three. And not hiring a fourth person. I mean, what is your hesitance to move on this, Dave? I think it's, I think it's, it is so much closer than I expected. And because of all of the burdens that it relieves, especially now, why would you not want to move forward with it tonight?
I'm not saying I shouldn't move forward with it, I'm saying I shouldn't move forward with it because it's gonna entail a lot more work. There's more legwork to it, I mean, there should be public meetings, people are gonna definitely, it's a big change. And they're gonna have to understand everything, you know, the implications of that, and logistics of it, and trash cans, and who's getting what, and how many. And so it's not just to say, go ahead and let's, let's do this, and it's not that simple, so.
So what are you, what are you proposing for discussion this evening, just looking at the numbers?
Just, just looking at the numbers, I felt like, you know, we should, you know, look at them together. And I could go over kind of, just, you know, what I have said, just my feelings on it, and, you know, for, for historical reference. And I think that the new board should look at these numbers and, and probably contact Royal. In the past, I think, I believe Jim Constantino is the person we've talked to, they, they did public meetings in Millbrook, when Millbrook changed over, this was years ago. But, and they brought the bins down and showed the different sizes and, you know, went over everything, so.
The company participated, you're saying, in Millbrook?
Yeah, yeah, they were, you know, a very important part of the whole discussion. I also have confidence in Royal to work with them, we, you know, there's all the other municipalities surrounding us that have worked with them, they, they're not a company that has, you know, locks in and then jacks up their rates or anything like that, which is some, a fear from some people. But they've given us three years with a minimal increase, and their, their, their costs are way lower than the others.
But I don't even, I'm not even sure why Royal bothered to respond, given the range of numbers from Royal and City Karting and AAA. I'm sorry, why AAA didn't even bother to respond, so it's so far out of, out of scale with the other numbers provided.
I don't know, they just, I think, I believe they just won one in, on a contract in Carmel. So.
I mean.
So. I have no idea.
I don't think it's real one, I meant AAA.
The reason why people bid on the wall or any other of the projects and are like 10 times as much, and you wonder why, but.
Yeah.
They're just there, they all came down and they were interested, they were all sitting in when we opened up the, up and up the bid, so it wasn't like, let's just throw a number there and oh. Maureen, do you want to add anything since you were working with me for?
No, I, I'm very pleased with the numbers from Royal, very, very pleased.
I would just, I would personally recommend moving forward for the new board to, you know, consider it and move forward with it and set up dates and whatever needs to be done with. You know, to inform the public of how it would go down. And, and, you know, for the new, for the board to understand exactly, you know, what's in, in the contract.
Well, I appreciate the, I know that you spent quite a lot of time compiling the numbers with Michelle, and I appreciate the time that you and Maureen spent on it.
Okay, so if there's nothing else there, hopefully move ahead on that, and we'll just inform Jim, send him a note saying, you know, that we're happy with the numbers. And hopefully the new board will move forward, they'll send you his contact numbers and, you know, and you got, and you can continue the conversation.
Sorry, Dave, I'm sorry, I just have one question, is there, was there a date in which they were told that they would get a response?
I, I think that, no, they've already, we've already given them the responses in the contract, or in the bid package. So the next one was, we said, I told them it's gonna take us a bit, a bit of time to, you know, to actually decide to move ahead and, you know, under the circumstances, so he's, he understands that.
Is that communicated in writing?
What's that?
Is that communicated in writing, does the clerk have a record?
Conversations. It's in the contract.
Okay, I should point out Elizabeth Constantino is on the call tonight, hello Elizabeth.
Hello Elizabeth.
Hello trustee Arlie, hello Mr. Mayor and Madam Mayor-elect. I, I am here in my capacity, obviously I am, as you know, daughter of Jim Constantino, but also as a resident of Cold Spring. So that is primarily why I'm here, but I have heard the message and I can absolutely communicate it.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for all the time you and Jim have spent, you know, talking to us, and I'm sure there have been many times when, you know, we had, we came back to you after a number of months, and you probably said, oh, not again. So, so thanks for hanging in there and we're finally getting this done.
Oh no, absolutely not, thank you very much, thank you all for your, you know, your time and your work. I, like I said, I'm a resident of Cold Spring, I, anything to make Cold Spring better, I am all on board for, so many, many thanks.
Looking forward to meeting you in person.
So one last thing, I really have to thank my wife Stephanie for drafting the contract. We started out with, you know, kind of a boilerplate and went to every, every little detail that we wanted in there. And Stephanie, since that's her wheelhouse, drafted it, and you know, so it's another big savings for the village, but also a very professional contract that was written or bid package, so thank you to my wife Stephanie.
Thanks Steph.
Okay, moving on, discussion on dump trucks, sander and fleet and highway department. So just the first things I'd like to ask the board to consider is bumping up the hourly rate for Corey for the time that Bugsy's, you know, will be absent. He's taking over his duties and running the, pretty much running the highway department and doing the time sheets. I believe he's only making, Jeff, you can correct me wrong, $18 an hour?
Yeah, I think it's 1865.
Okay, I, I would like to bring him up to like $22, which is, I, whatever, a steal, I would imagine for, to have somebody take over that position and deal with, you know, the highway department for the next few weeks. I'd like to also ask if we could do that retroactively too, for the time that he has spent, if it's probably just a week. But, you know, I think it's a big, it's a big, big ask of him, and he's taking it on, getting things done. He was supervising the, Pudham County, putting up the wreaths. I asked him to fill some big, large potholes over by Food Town, which he did right away. And I, I think he's doing a great job, he's taking care of businesses as far as the garbage trucks go, the garbage goes and pickups go, so.
So retroactive to what date, because Bugsy was?
From his first PTO day.
Okay, from first.
So Dave, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to raise Corey, I forget, what is his last name?
Thomas.
Corey Thomas, salary up to $22 per hour, retroactively to the first day of Robert Downey Jr.'s PTO.
Second?
Until, until such time as Bugsy returns, correct?
Yes.
Then you're gonna bring him back down?
Yeah, well, if he's not gonna be, if Bugsy comes back, then, then yes, he would go back to $18, or whatever his current pay is. This is just as a substitute for the highway crew chief in his absence.
While he's doing the duties of the job.
Is there a deputy position in, in that department?
No, there's not. So there was a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, to, on to, on to the dump truck and Sanders. So in, in the perfect world, you would, you would, you know, you would have, you'd put a bid in, or not put a bid in, you'd put an RFP out for a vehicle that you, that you needed, you do that in advance. And all of this was done, but the problem is now parts and availability of trucks are pretty much at a standstill. So we did have a dump truck ordered, which has been pushed back, the dates have been pushed back and pushed back, and now the dump truck isn't due until spring, is that correct, Jeff?
That's correct.
Right, so with that said, we have one dump truck, which they, they can handle our large sander. The new one was gonna be used for that, and it's all set up for it with the hydraulics, everything that's needed. We won't be seeing this this winter, obviously, so we, the dump truck that we do have will handle it. And Bugsy did go out and get a estimate, the, the truck was brought to, to a company to see what it would cost, and they gave an estimate of $7,000 to, to retrofit the dump truck for a sander, so that's one option to do that. That's significant amount of money, but we really don't have much of it, well, we have options, but that's one option. We have one other sander that's on our dual wheel small Ford dump truck, 350. We could possibly purchase another small dump sander, I think they're two yards that would work on one of our other Ford pickups, it's a 350. Bugsy has concerns on that, doesn't think they would handle that well on that, you know, also the spreading, the spread of the soil when they're in operation is smaller, on the smaller trucks, and that's one of the advantages of a bigger truck. Also, you don't have to obviously go back and forth and keep filling it, so. So I guess the question is, how to, how to move ahead with the, the dump truck? I feel that the $7,000, it would be, would retrofit the one that we have, they could do that quickly, so it would be ready for use. If not, we would have to wait and/or find a substitute truck in the meantime for the winter, which, who knows, could set in next week, probably now, we could have snow. So that's, that's, that's basically it for the truck situation, the garbage truck was never ordered, the, so, you know, back to the conversation on garbage, the garbage truck kept, we had put that out to bid a few times, and that was taking quite a while, and we canceled that order. Since we didn't know, have, know where we're going with this, so we won't need a new dump truck. Because we were, we thought we would have to keep one because of the Sunday morning pickups and Main Street pickups, and also for brush. But those are all included in the, the Royal bid, so we don't have to worry about a dump truck at all. We can keep the one that we have, if need be, I guess that would be a conversation I have with Bugsy on the, the, the use of it. Basically.
You mean keep the current garbage truck?
Yes, yes.
Okay, also Bugsy's on the call, it's, you have a question for Bugsy?
Oh, okay, wasn't sure. Bugsy, would you like to chime in, fill us in on anything as far as the dump trucks and sander, I guess that's the big question.
He's not responding.
Dave, we, Dave, a question, we spoke last week or the week before about buying a used vehicle, what was that to be replacing?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Hey Bugs, how you feeling?
Just sitting here waiting.
Hey Bugsy, thanks for, for, for being on the Zoom. We're just, I guess you've been listening and we're just discussing the truck and sander situation. So maybe if you could elaborate a little more on, on your thinking and what your recommendations are for this winter.
Um, as far as retrofitting, I kind of like that idea, cause, just because it'll be a second truck that can handle that four yard. If, if one of them goes down, it can just be swapped to the other truck. If we go with a second, smaller two yard, I would worry about the suspension being able to handle the small two yard salter in there. We have one currently in the 2016, which is probably the beefiest of the suspensions we have on our small trucks, and that thing sags when it's fully loaded with salt.
And as far as the retrofitting, which is hydraulic versus buying a four yard electric, is there any benefit or pros and cons on that?
Um.
I mean, both that way, I mean, either way, both, both vehicles would be, have Sanders on them then, I mean, we'd have possibly two Sanders next year. If we did one, you know, if we did an electric or, you know, and whatever the cost of that is, I understand there's not much as far as, you know, mounting that as there is with the hydraulic.
Correct, the electric would be a lot easier to mount, but by the time you get an electric salter, you're looking at the same price as the retrofit, so it kind of, you know, you, you better yourself with a brand new salter, of course. Me personally, I've always preferred hydraulics, I can just, I get a better spread with the salt, I get a more uniform delivery to the streets. Electric to me is just, the one we have just really doesn't put a constant spray of salt out.
I think wouldn't, wouldn't the advantage be, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but if we did get an electric, then we would have the electric, which would be new, and say that's $7,000, we'd have that on the, on the old dump truck. But then we'd also have, we'd have the, our, our current sander, and once we got the new truck, it's set up for it, we could put it on there. So we would then have two Sanders and Salters and two trucks.
Um, may I?
What do you mean, as far as if we were to get, you're saying another two yard electric or four yard electric?
If we got a four yard, instead of retrofitting with hydraulic, if we got a, the salter itself, an electric salter and mounted it on the old truck, and that costs approximately $7,000, I don't know what the cost is for a four yarder. So that, that way we would have that truck with an electric, and then we'd also have the, the one that works with hydraulics, which is, which will be able to be installed on the new truck that we're getting.
Correct, yeah, with the new truck, it is completely set up to take our four yard salter, and you could do, so then you would actually technically have three Salters in your fleet.
Exactly.
So it's definitely a possibility. I mean, for all I know, the electric one we have in the 2016 just isn't wired properly, and that's why it doesn't throw a consistent spreading of salt. Something I've never had the time to look into.
Okay, I, well, I think one thing we should find out is how much a, a four yard salt, electric salter would cost, so that we have that option.
I think there's another data point that's needed here, and that's the, the truck, Bugsy, the truck we're talking about retrofitting is a 2001, correct? So it's 20 years old, so I, I question investing another $7,000 to retrofit a 20-year-old truck? I mean, I guess I'd wanna know what the value of the truck is and what its, what its condition is. Another option that's available, having talked with Supervisor Shay, is that the town has a surplus small truck with a, I believe it's either three or four yard salter that is available to us via an intermunicipal agreement, as it is a surplus vehicle for the town to get us through the winter. And I would like to pursue that option before we consider dumping $7,000 into a 20-year-old truck.
So why, why wasn't the rest of the board, I've been informed of this, these conversations, actually, I think that Bugsy had said that, you said that they had agreed to, to actually lend us a truck or whatever.
I'm happy, I'm happy to give you the background on this information, Mr. Mayor, this is the first, it's Dave, this is the first it's been on the agenda.
No, Kathleen, I was, just no, oh, you weren't, I was speaking and then.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, thank you, that's very gracious of you, you've always been very gracious, so thank you. My, my, my problem is, is that, you know, and people aren't aware of this, all of the transparency issues you seem to have with our board and all of mistrust you have. But yet you go out and make a deal with Phillips Town as a trustee without anyone knowing about that, and you don't seem to have a problem with that.
Because I haven't made a deal, Dave.
Well, it sounded like it, and I talked to Mr. Shay.
You're leaving.
I am speaking, I am speaking, I know, thank, thank you, I, I'm so glad that you're allowing me to speak as the mayor. I, I hope that everyone is respectful of you and you are the mayor as you have been with me, I really hope that happens. So yes, great smile, you could do that for maybe a photo op, maybe, and, so anyway, back to what I was saying. I had talked to Supervisor Shay, and it doesn't seem that that's the case, and that hasn't, and it needs to go to a full board, and it has to go through the highway department, but none of this is done, but yet this is an option, and you've gone out on your own without speaking to the mayor or any of the other boards, transparency issue once again, and have come up with this, you know, another option, so there is a problem with that. It's just not consistent with the transparency that you've, you've, you know, put us up to, or the, you know, the bar or the level where you feel we should be at. But it's okay, though, that you're making deals as, as a trustee with another municipality.
Are you finished, I wanna make sure I don't interrupt, are you finished?
Yes, I am for now.
Okay, great, so there's no deal, Dave, you are leaving office on December 6th, right, at the beginning of the winter? Right? When, as a trustee with fiduciary responsibility to look at spending, options are put forward for retrofitting a 20-year-old truck with a $7,000 piece of equipment. I asked questions, I asked questions of the town to ask what they might have available as backup, there is no deal, Dave. It requires an intermunicipal agreement, I am putting it forward to this board as the first time the subject is on an agenda that an option is available that I think we should explore. There is no secrecy about the meeting, this is the first that we've had the conversation. Again, you don't speak to anyone, me, you don't speak outside of session, I have had this conversation with Jeff to let him know, because you are only communicating with him, that was an option available to you? You clearly took the opportunity to call Richard, I'm delighted to hear that, and that we both see that this is an option, you don't have to take it. I personally am opposed to dumping $7,000 on a 20-year-old truck, when there may be the option for an intermunicipal agreement with the town. So you can call it a deal, it's not a deal, it's information gathering. And now it is available to you as mayor, as an option until December 6th.
Okay, so a couple of things to be clear, I did not call Richard Shay because I was following up on the, on the option of using one of their trucks. I was calling him to say if he had any knowledge of, of this so-called, whatever you wanna call it, intermunicipal agreement.
There is no intermunicipal agreement, Dave, there is none, there was a conversation.
Interrupting, which you will keep doing and continually doing.
If you, if you don't.
You would, would you, see, this is what people don't understand, I'm talking, you keep talking over me, over me, over me, over me, over me, but when I react to that in, in a less than professional manner, maybe, then everyone feels I'm the ogre, I'm the bad one. But they don't see that every time I'm talking as mayor, you continually talk over me, constantly talking over me as you're doing right now. So if I could speak for a while, maybe observe some Roberts rules, and I have the floor, so if I could. First of all, I just, to be clear, I did not call Mr. Supervisor Shay to find out, you know, what the options were. I was concerned because a trustee had gone off on her own and was communicating, whether you're not, you're gonna be the, the next mayor or not, and you have fiduciary responsibilities or whatever. I have those right now, I'm taking care of them, I know winter's coming, I'm an old man, remember, an old man, I've gone through many winters, every winter comes, and we have snow, and we have to plow. And all, everything was, everything was fine, working with Bugsy on this, every, there's no, no immediate danger of anything happening, we have everything under control. We were gonna discuss this tonight, but that wasn't soon enough, so, so that's where we're at, I understand my responsibilities, I understand, I'm. So that's where we're at. I understand my responsibilities. I understand I'm still in office. I understand that. The winter is here or is, we'll be here shortly and there'll be snow, and I've been working with Bugsy on ways to fix to uh to work, to deal with that. The other thing is, first of all, I don't know what your expertise and trucks are or whether you understand a two thousand and one or ten or whatever. I personally don't. We don't use that truck so much. Do you know how many miles are on that truck?
No, I don't.
So have you talked to Bugsy on this and how many miles on that and what condition that truck's in? And 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 before you make this decision that you don't want to put money into it, because the mileage on that might be very low. The truck may be in very good shape. I Bugs said before that it good shape, that the engine is strong, that it can be used. If it is only also, do you know what you choose during the? Choose for, it's used minimally, minimally. So. Another truck, having two of them, this will be even less wear and tear on that, and it'll be another truck that we will be able to use. Without going out and without having to make any kind of municipal agreements with anyone else, if this all works. So a lot of information hasn't been uh been looked into, but yet. You felt that that you needed to go talk to someone else because, Barry, I wasn't doing my job or you quick enough. So everything is under control. I think to decide on spending some thousand dollars. If you want to look into this other option, that's fine. You should make, you should uh understand that that's going to be a few weeks away or. And uh maybe that'll be too late. So if you'd like to continue with that. You know, that option, that that's fine. You're going to be in charge. But it's going to take a while to do that, whereas we could have a sander, and if you're really worried about it, we could have a sander on a truck. Probably in a few weeks, depending on availability of an electric one, or if we want to go with the other, we could have that done shortly.
I don't want to interrupt. Do you finish?
Well, I I think you understand that I have just stopped speaking.
I just want to make sure.
Okay, good.
So the mayor is one of five. I don't need to ask your permission to speak with another elected official. I gathered information for my own knowledge. We all have fiduciary responsibility, not just you. It's entirely reasonable. To inquire what might be options other. And, you know, if you were in fact communicating before this evening. All of these items would have been known to others on the board. You do whatever you like. You are the mayor. You're in charge. You can put it forward for a vote. And the the other four of us can make a decision. I. Do not yet know anything about the truck, the existing truck, because nothing has been shared. I don't talk to Bugsy while I understand him to be on. Leave after an injury. So um if you're speaking with him, that's that is your prerogative. I don't think that it's appropriate for a trustee to be reaching out to Bugsy. Um, I would have questions before I would dump another seven thousand dollars into a twenty year old vehicle. So. In in my duty as trustee, I asked questions. It's not inappropriate. I don't need your permission to do that. I leave you to take whatever decision you would like this evening.
Thank you. Um, so just to follow up, one, I I guess, I'd like. Once again, interrupting, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's true. Really is.
It is.
I'm awful. You're wonderful. The um, I would just like to, you know, understand how. You've you've uh put such a strong emphasis on on transparency. And that you're, and and you're obviously, you're it's, you can talk to whoever you want as a trustee or as a as a resident and ask for options. Um, cutting deals or or seeing without, without information or knowing all information. At this stretch, but for for the rest of the board not to know, it seems like this would be something if I had not, or if Maria or Fran had done, that you would take exception to. That there would be no transparency, like, well, when did this happen? When did we start talking to Phillips Town? Are we talking to any other municipalities? I don't understand. And that's where uh that's where I think you would go with that. Um, but it seems like if you do it, then transparency isn't an issue. You had a tra- you had problems with uh everything being CC, everyone being CC'd on uh on any um. Any conversations or any inquiries with with our attorney, and yet. There was a time, at least one, a one that I know of where you've contacted him, which no one on the board is aware of other than you. Um, but that seems to be okay.
It is my right as a trustee to ask.
I am speaking.
I'm sorry, Dave.
I know it's very hard for you not to be.
It is hard when you, it is hard when you insinuate, Dave. It is very hard.
Keep talking.
It's very hard when you insinuate.
I'm I'm not insinuating anything. I can, I can ask for, and which you're aware, I can, I don't have to foil or anything, go in as. I've talked to John. He said that you have contacted him and no one else is aware of that. And 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 this is after you had told all the board members in emails. That you on everything CC, that we should all be CC'd on all conversations with John. So I'm not insinuating anything. What I'm saying is you have a level of transparency that you think we should be held to. When you're not accountable for that. And that's not an insinuation. It's a fact.
Okay, Dave, you're you're entitled to your opinion, Dave.
I certainly am. I'm entitled to, I'm entitled to facts also, and I can produce them if needed.
All right, so are we, is there anything else that we need to discuss related to the highway department, or do you want to continue talking about me?
Uh, are you running the meeting now again?
No, I'm just wondering, I'm wondering.
To do since the start is just, uh, run the meeting, bring things up and then start, you know. Commenting and commenting, commenting, cutting people off, whatever, and doing it. So now you're asking me if we should. Go back and actually talk to the dump truck about the highway department. It's like, you're asking me, well, I'm I'm the chair of the meeting. That's that's kind of, it's interesting, but um, yes, I would actually like to go back to that. Yes, puzzlement, look, very good. Um, so let's go back to the discussion on the sander and the truck. I'm not saying that we should go. Either way, or if there's another option to take it, I was discussing where we are now and whether we could go with electric or hydraulic. I'm from everything Bugsy has told me that that truck is a solid truck that we could put a salter on. And sander and it would, it would suffice, especially if we have another one in the wings. Bugsy, if you're still on, is that true?
The truck is very good. The motor is very strong. The frame is solid. The only issue there is with it is the straps for the fuel tank would need to be redone. So it's a good possibility. It would need a new fuel tank. It is twenty years old, but we don't use it all that often. It's got about forty. Two thousand miles on it, I think, the last time I looked. It is, it is definitely an option to put it on. We use it for snow removal, um. Hauling dirt. When we do uh water main breaks, going picking up trees for tree advice. So it's, it's not in bad shape. It can definitely handle that, getting a salter on it. Um. And like I said, the only issue I know of with it is that I have to replace the fuel tap, uh, fuel tank straps.
And so I I guess the follow up, the follow up question is, uh, is, do you feel it's worth putting a a salter and sander on that truck? And making that investment?
It depends. If we can sit there and get a. A loner, and if we have it at all times we need it. That can definitely work just to cover us until a new truck comes in. Um, and I spoke to Carl about it. Um, it's not a large truck. It's it's a smaller truck like our six wheel dump truck. So instead of just me and Bobby being able to use it, anybody down there could drive this. That would be. A helpful option. Um. It's also nice to have, you know, two trucks that can handle a hydraulic four yard salter as well.
Okay, so I'm, don't hear, I don't know what I'm hearing. Um, any other things, any, from anyone else on the board?
Um, hey Bugsy, what would a fuel tank strap cost? I don't even know what that is, but I can, I can only imagine.
They um, there are two metal straps that go around the fuel tank. Um, they have some, a good amount of, you know, rust and corrosion to them. Um, you're probably looking at about. If it's just straps, then you're probably looking at about four hundred. And if the fuel tank needs to be replaced, you're probably looking at about fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred.
So that would be in addition to the seven K for?
Correct.
The retrofit.
But if we keep that truck Bugsy, we would have to do that anyway.
Correct.
Okay, any other direction from the board on on where you'd like to go? Uh, would you like me to talk to Supervisor Shay and follow up on that? Do you, and have that as an option? Do you want to go ahead with any of the other options?
Well, I I definitely think it's, it's a good option to keep open. Um. Yeah, I I'd start with that first and see what he has to say and I could talk to Carl and see what truck they have. And like, when I did speak to Carl, he did say that this three yard electric one they have does. Put out a very nice smooth, you know, flow of salt to the roads.
Okay, I will follow up with Richard. Hopefully, there's no snow. Uh, it probably won't get back to me for a week, but um. Or not for a week, but with the holidays here. So I'll follow up. Everyone's okay with that on the board.
It's fine. Yeah.
Okay. Um. Yeah, we did the garden, drew the highway. Anything else on highway?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. Next, we table number five. Um, next planning board recommendations um for Forty Main Street. I believe Matt's on the line or with.
Hello.
Hey, Matt.
Hi. So you guys all have the letter. Um, Forty Main Street has a change of use uh for um. Forty Main Street Corporation LLC has a change of use. James Gary, the owner, and Tim Rassik. Are on the call in case you guys have any questions, because it's an unusual application. It um is a conversion of the old space into two small retail spices on either side. So the front will still have the appearance of retail and the interaction with the street, but the back, the large space, you know, fifty seven hundred square feet roughly. Is going to be an office. Um. For that they're going to run their business out of. And as you see in the letter um that we sent to the board. The retail spaces, you know, comport with the, you know, what, you know, what our understanding is of the. Legislative intent of the parking waivers, which is for short term mixed use parking on Main Street. Um, but Main Street has a four hour time limit for parking. Obviously, an office, you know, requires much longer than a four hour workday, you know, certainly in America. And um, so it doesn't really, it, I I, we believe it's an unintended consequence and, you know, unanticipated under the code. So we, the planning board cannot recommend the the parking waivers for the thirty seven required for the office. However, we want to be clear that we really, we support the application and this use. We think it's very compatible with respect to Main Street, right? The, like I said, the interactivity of the storefronts with the street. It's not a, you know, it's not a curtained off office, you know, that is, that is dead after the workday. Right? There is a entrance in the center, the garage door, which goes back to the office. So the. The interact, you know, the vibrancy with the street is still there. The lights are still there. The retail experience is still there. Um, and the office is not making noise. It's not, you know, it's, it's um, so the op, we believe the use is actually quite compatible with, you know, with Main Street. But for the fact of the parking, and obviously parking is the biggest issue. So that's like, you know. How did you uh enjoy the play, Mrs. Uh, yeah, so anyway, I, you you know, it's, it's a big issue. Um, because it requires forty four parking waivers to meet the requirement. Forty four is, you know, essentially half of Main Street. Um, so we, we are excited about, you know, somebody giving some love to the building and invigorating the building. Offering, you know, lunch clients and deli clients and the pizza shop, you know, customers that are kind of moving around through the village. But yet we're very sensitive to the fact that. It, we don't believe this is compatible at all with the, with the payment and live parking waivers. That were introduced in two thousand and ten. Back in two thousand and ten, when those waivers were introduced, there was a four hour parking limit on Main Street as well and has been for many, many years. There are some folks on the board um that have been here a very long time. Uh, Catherine joining the board has been here a long time, so folks can, you know. It, that, that parking restriction has been there for a very long time. Um, so it really is an unintended or an unanticipated consequence when when these waivers were anticipated. So the planning board recommends, you know, going back to the village board, obviously the legislative body and saying. What can you do to support this application? One thing that the planning board had thought of and 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 James, the property owner and business owner. Who had, who owns the building now is the use of the municipal lot, right? Because it's underutilized Monday through Thursday. They have a four day work week, Monday through Thursday, or essentially Monday through Thursday. Um, which is what they're requesting um parking for. So it could be a use and a revenue stream for the village of, you know. Feeding those meters through a permit system to meet the parking. Um, and or anything else you guys can come up with. That's, that's the most obvious solution to us. It's a revenue stream of an underutilized resource for the village. It meets the application. I think when you worry about, well, what about the next one? I think you, you, I think I I wouldn't get too stuck on that if I were you. I think that you can, you can't give people what you don't have. If on the next one, you don't have the parking, you don't have it. Right? But you have somebody who's investing in a, you know, large property. Um, and so we hope the village board will consider this application and consider a way to work with the applicant. Um, we do like, you know, we do think the use is very compatible. Um, and but but for the fact that, uh, you know. The parking, which is a a, an issue that we all are very, very aware of in this village. Um, so, and we're here, if you have questions, I've asked the owner and his architect, uh, Mr. Rassik to. To be here because you guys might have. Uh, you know, questions to figure, you know, to kind of help understand the application. Um, and then certainly I'm here. Member Hawkins is here from the board. I think the only other one here, but we can certainly uh walk you through anything or show you any, anything you need to look at.
So, uh, what is the normal workday? What's the start time? What's the end time?
James, I'll pass that to you. Or ten?
Sure, it just took me a while to find the unmute button. Um, nine to about four thirty, Monday through Thursday.
Okay, um, as you're probably aware, the municipal lot is metered right now. Uh, it's paid by space. Um, we do not have. In the, in the wintertime, we do have winter parking permits. Uh, that allow people to park in the municipal lot twenty four hours a day, seven days a week for approximately four months. The concept, uh, there was an article in the Highlands Current. I'm not saying that this article was written by either of you. But they talked about reserved parking. And the concept of reserved parking doesn't really work in in our municipal lot. Uh, would it be acceptable for you to have a similar parking permit? As we do now for wintertime parking, which would allow however number. Of permits you wish to purchase would allow your people to park in the municipal lot from. Eight forty five AM to five fifteen PM. At a rate that we would be mutually agreeing upon. Based upon the number of spaces you'd want to uh permit.
I'm sure if I understand that construct right, that sounds like a great idea. That would be fun.
I think um to um to Matt, um, the number of spaces, what would you actually need in the municipal lot? I think there's, is it Marie thirty eight spaces now?
Thirty eight with one of them being handicapped, and I'm assuming. Uh, you, you would not be using a handicap space.
Right.
Is that correct? I keep, keep in, keep in mind, Dave, that um as of sometime in December, the mayor's park, parking. Area will become available and will also be metered.
I would, I would just think if, well, if we knew what the number was, I I would think that if we left the uh handicap, then the uh, and. The spaces, I think there's ten along the, they're parallel with the River View. The restaurant, and then there would be thirty um available for uh. For Mr. Gary and his project. Would that work, thirty? Or do we need total of forty, Matt? Or what do we, what are we asking for?
So, so there's a couple of different ways to look at this. The the applicant is saying they need twenty. They have uh twenty nine desks at full occupancy. Um, twenty eight, okay. Um, but the, the code. Requires thirty seven spaces, right? You know, and so obviously, in this case, we have these things called payment live parking waivers, but I think it, in this case, it might make be. But I think in this case, it might make it easier to wrap your brain around, you know, a parking impact fee, you know, opposed to calling them, you know, a space. But yeah, when you, the way we calculate our parking for retail is one per 150 square feet. That number for the reach, I'm sorry, for, well, it's actually the same, retail and office, one per 150. So the office space comes out to 37 spaces. The code requires 37 spaces onsite for the office use. Because the seven for the retail fully conforms with, you know, the understanding and the legislative intent of those waivers. One is grandfathered. We always grandfather one space on Main Street for the business. So it requires six waivers. That's all good. We can, you know, set that to the side. I think we're all in agreement there. And the planning board is recommending those waivers. So we're just talking about the 37 spaces that, that relate to the office use.
But there's no, the, given the number of desks that you, that were just described, the need is for fewer than 37 parking spaces.
You know, so the code, the code, yes, the code certainly, the planning board and the planning board chair certainly will just speak to the code. That's what, yeah, that's what you guys, I think, hope that I do all the time, and that's what I do. So, but James, if you want to speak to what your need is as an employer and what your expected occupancy is on a given workday, I believe that was 20.
Yep, that's correct. Thanks, Matt. Yes, 20.
James, why is it 20 versus 28, if I may ask?
Well, you know, times have changed in the last couple of years wherein we have folks that want to and we want to support them in working from home with greater regularity. So the week becomes a hybrid. We won't have people in as much. Therefore, there's a, you know, not that full load of folks in. We suspect from polling with them that people are looking to come in two to three days a week typically. And mostly, that's if they were looking to get together with their individual teams. So it's just a different model than we've had as a society wherein people are, you know, hybriding two to three days instead of that full five days that I think most people, you know, have seen in the past.
Okay. So would you be satisfied with 20 spaces in one of the two parking lots where the spaces are not, are not assigned? They are not dedicated? They are available for your use at, as I, as I said, based upon whatever fee is agreed to?
I think that would be right on point with the number we may need. And that would be great.
So Matt, just a, I, as we, you know, talk, I mean, we have to obviously look into the future a bit on a change of, of things, or maybe everyone will be required to be working onsite, whatever. I would feel more comfortable with 30. And I'm not sure what the planning board's actually recommending on this. I mean, you know, yes, maybe some people won't come in. Maybe they will. Maybe everyone will come in. So what's, what are we actually recommending?
Well, to be honest, or frank rather, the planning board can't really recommend anything, right? I think that the code says, you know, that what we have in the B1 and the B2 are parking waivers. And in our opinion, the parking waivers do not align with, with, with an office use that requires long-term parking on Main Street. So, but, but in general terms, I would say it's always best to, to follow your code as closely as possible. So 37 of something, right? If you were to give 37 permits out, right? You run the risk of filling the entire municipal lot, right? So if you were to say, do 20 permits that the applicant says they need, but then impose an impact fee of the remaining 17, right? I'm hesitant to call them payment leave parking waivers because that sends them to Main Street. But whatever you guys, and I would definitely consult with, you know, with the village attorney as well on how you paper this because it's important that it's, we're really clear about that this application is unique, right? And all the whereas statements in the resolution should say that, you know, whereas we have this available parking, where, whereas the, you know, the village, you know, the planning board believes it's a compatible use and get that stuff down correctly and then kind of say, but we also don't want to give, you know, print permits up that takes our entire municipal lot Monday through Thursday. I think that's a very defensible position. But you should, I do believe that it, the logic should be there to say, how did you answer the question that the code requires 37 spaces, right? You know, and so I think that if you, something along the lines, like what comes, what comes to my mind is, you know, the 20 permits that they're asking for and then, you know, charging 17 in parking waiver fees, but, you know, maybe a parking impact fee or whatever you want to call it. Because there, you know, you're not, you don't want to make any representation that you're sending these cars to park on Main Street, right? Which is the B1. So something along those lines, I would consult with, you know, with the village attorney. But I think something like that is kind of what, is what comes to mind as, as a way to, a creative way for the village board to support the application, right? And the planning board then to sign off on this, on the site plan. Is that clear?
I will offer an alternative, Matt. Okay. We've got the 37 non-handicapped in the municipal lot and an additional 31 around Mayor's Park. We've, so we've got a total of 68. So we can accommodate permits for 37 cars between the two lots.
Okay. If that's something that the village board wants to do, that you, you know, that you want to commit those spaces Monday through Thursday?
I think that the addition of Mayor's Park, you know, and, and also keeping in mind, we want to leave spaces open in the municipal lot, the one, the closer one to, to River View. I think if we did 20 there and 17 down on the other spot on the, near Mayor's Park, I think that if only 20 people are going to be there, then that'll be fine. It'll be less of a walk. But if there is, you know, times when you need more parking, it'll be available and we will have made an agreement on it. And I think that would work.
David, I don't understand how we can reserve any spaces in either of the lots. Right?
I think that you could put signs up that say, these are reserved for 40 Main Street.
You can put signs up that say, these are reserved for 40 Main Street, Mondays through Fridays from 8:45 till 5:00 p.m. And I guarantee you that, that people will not pay attention to them and they'll pull into the parking space.
But if there's, excuse me, go ahead.
As we were doing with the, in the parking committee, we were going to have hanger, mirror hangers. That could be given out to the, to the, all of the employees and they could put the hangers on there. And like anything else, people can ignore it or what, but we'd at least be able to ticket them and.
I agree that what we were proposing to do was hangers versus decals on the sides of cars. And, and I fully support the idea of hangers. What I don't support or don't see how we can reserve X number of spaces in one lot or in another lot. The, the concept of reserved spaces just hasn't worked for us in the past. If we put down cones, people move the cones. If we put up a sign that says, this is reserved for parking and you have a hanger there, then a person who parks there who doesn't have a hanger is liable to get a ticket, liable to get a ticket, but not necessarily will receive a ticket. I, I don't see why we don't use, use a method that says we have hangers and 40 Main Street gets 37 hangers. And those hangers entitle 37 cars to park in any one of 68 parking spaces. And, and if, if a car is parked in either of the two lots and has a hanger, our police will not ticket them.
What if, what if people, just for whatever reason, just hypothetical, show up and there aren't 20 spaces left for people to park in?
That's a risk that Mr. Gray and Mr. Rassik would have to take. But the likelihood that, that, that someone would not be able to find a parking space out of 68 part, a free park, an available parking space out of 68 parking spaces at 8:45 in the morning on a Monday or Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday is low. The probability is low that they will not be able to find a parking space. Having said that, at noon or 1 o'clock and on a fine summer afternoon or fall afternoon, the likelihood is high, the probability is high that they will not be able to find a parking space. But when they come in for the workday in the morning, more than likely, they'll be able to find a parking space in one of the 68 parking spaces that exist off of Fair Street.
I'm, I'm fine with that. My only concern is that we have available spaces for, you know, for visitors in the main municipal lot.
I agree, I agree with you. So I think, I, I don't know. Matt, did anybody ever send you the spreadsheet?
Oh, the available data?
Yeah.
The, oh, yeah, no, I can shoot that to the full board if you like.
I've sent it off to, I know you sent it off to Kathleen. I know you.
And you and Dave, yeah. And you and Jeff, I'm sorry.
Right. So I did an analysis for the last three years of the utilization of the 38 space parking lot on Mondays through Thursdays. And there were some dates over that three year period when the number of cars that were parked, where the number of cars that paid to park in the lot exceeded the number of spaces in the lot, which makes sense. People pull in at 11 o'clock in the morning, they spend a couple of hours and then they leave. And then somebody else comes in, they pay for parking and then they leave. So there were some situations over a three year period where 60 paid parking sessions occurred on a Thursday. And there were some situations where 40 parking sessions occurred on a Monday. But in general, the number of parking sessions, Monday through Thursday, highs, highs were on Mondays and Thursdays, lows were Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Wednesday night was, Wednesday night was, night was not a lone night. Wednesday night is always a high night. But I, I think that you'll find that in most cases, on most dates, you'll be able to find a parking space in one of the two municipal lots.
How many winter permits are issued?
Right now, I think Jeff said 12, maybe he got a 13th in today.
And they're good for the entire season?
Yes. And they're good for 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
And when you have, in the past, entered into an agreement with River View for parking in the municipal lot, how has that worked?
River View hired someone to monitor the 10 spaces and interrogate a person who went to park in one of the 10 spaces and said, are you going to be, are you going to be having dinner? And if the answer was no, they were told the space was reserved. It's the, and they had, they had cones out for each one of the 10 spaces, but they had a person there. And that was how they were able to enforce reserved parking spaces.
And how does it work for Hudson House on the, on the new street lot?
Hudson House, Main Street lot?
New Street, the new street lot by the boat club.
Big sign, Hudson House only, violators will be towed.
How does that work?
Violators will be towed.
And are they?
I have no idea, but I've never seen the lot full.
Okay. So there is something to be said for. At this time, I actually was talking, excuse me.
That was me, sorry.
Thank you, Matt. The, in, in the Hudson House lot, you have the example of actual signage, yeah? And the signage that's available in that lot enables, in theory, the police to ticket and tow. But without the signage, it would be a different circumstance. So to Dave's point, I think it was Dave's point, signage seems to be an important variable in having the places available and having the capacity to ticket and tow. Is that fair?
Just one correction, Kathleen. I don't believe that the police ticket the Hudson House parking lot.
But if someone were parked there who was not registered to the hotel, would they have the capacity because of the signage?
Would they have the capacity to what?
The ability to ticket.
I don't believe so. I think it's treated the same as private property. We double check that, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is a sign that announces that lot as for the use of Hudson House, but it is treated as private property because that is a lease situation, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The big difference is that the municipal lot is a municipal lot. This isn't, there's nothing that indicates that this is for, for public use as for private use and it's, it's clearly spelled out. Whereas a municipal lot, whatever we do there is the sign which will say it's municipal lot and also will have whatever kind of deal we come up with, with the owners of 40 Main.
So could this be constructed similarly to the Hudson House lease wherein the portion of the lot or lots, meaning the area next to River View and the area next to Mayor's Park, which were being leased to Mr. Gary, would be identified as such, reserved for the, for permit holders in the times in which the, the contract, the times the contract covers for Mr. Gary in the same way that Hudson House has done? Except it sounds as if in the municipal lot, you'd have to have individual signage on individual spaces. So then you would be assigning the spaces or a portion of the lot.
Can I make a suggestion here? To think if Hudson House is the wrong parking lot to be looking at, I think the MTA parking lot is a more comparable thing to look at where you have a certain number of spaces that are permit parking.
Right.
And that's kind of what we're looking at here. So you could put up signage saying, you know, permit parking only Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 5:30. All others will be taken. However, many spots you agree to, I think that kind of covers it.
I, I agree, Jeff. That's the way I would do the signage as well, to just say parking by permit Monday through Friday, not really identifying the client or the address or any of that. Just really just saying, you can't park there. And, and what you have to put into Kathleen's point, what I was trying to say earlier was when Hudson House is private property, Hudson House has the ability, I would think, to tow those cars. That they can just order, if, I don't know if they enforce that, but they have the ability to do that if they want to. And you would typically, and I know in our properties at work, we have to put it on there that you're going to be towed at your expense, otherwise you can't tow.
I guess I have a problem with saying that the entire municipal lot is going to be devoted Mondays through Thursdays to people who work at 40 Main Street.
But we're not, are we?
Back to that 37, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not, if you follow Matt's model of 20 or 29 spaces with the balance given over in an impact fee. So that you meet the code requirement to Stephanie's point in the last planning board meeting. You meet, you meet the, the, you meet the calculation under the code for spaces in a hybrid of actual physical spaces and impact fees, X number of impact fees, whatever, whatever the division ends up being.
Although that's not the way the code is written right now. I come back to, I have a problem with allocating more than 50% of the municipal lot to 40 Main Street workers.
But you're not if our, if our capacity increases to 61 and he's requesting 20.
Again, my concern is allocating more than 50% of municipal lot to 40 Main Street workers. There's a capacity.
50% of 61.
Again, the municipal lot on Fair Street has 37 spaces in it. 20%, 20 spaces is more than 50% of that lot. I have a problem with more than 50% of the lot being allocated to 40 Main Street workers.
I thought we were including Mayor's Park in that number, so there would be actually 68 parking spots.
But Kathleen's allocation is that 20, 20 of the spaces in the municipal lot are allocated to the 40 Main Street.
Or some configuration of the two spaces that you referred to, Marie. You, you were the first who raised the possibility of the Mayor's Park spaces increasing the total. And so building on that, I am, I am meaning, I am think, I am speaking of them collectively as the municipal lots, lot, which includes the existing lot and the two be metered spaces at Mayor's Park as you began the conversation.
Okay, I I am, again, I I'm totally supportive of thirty-seven parking, uh, parking permits being issued. But I am opposed to allocating a specific parking in a specific lot.
I'm I'm for, I think that we, I'm I'm not for, uh, having any type of waivers on the, uh, additional seventeen. I think, you know, I think we're supposed to be doing is finding spaces and there's thirty-sevens in the number. We should find them. I think we should allocate, dedicate spaces in the in the municipal lot by, uh, Riverview. I think there should be twenty there, leaving eight, um, for, uh, for any visitor use. And this is all during the the period of time when, you know, all the all the stats say that there's not, there's not that much use. Um, and then I think the other seventeen can be, um, down at Mayor's Park and probably won't be used according to, uh, Mr. Gary. So, um, that would, that I think we would be doing what we're supposed to be doing responsibly. I think the planning board is, I think that's what they're trying to do. They're saying there's thirty-seven spaces that are needed. So we find them. And I think we dedicate them. And I think we put signage up that says, as Matt had said, and I'd said earlier that we should, you know, it's parking for by permit only for these certain hours. And and if we have to add and or, you know, person will be towed, I think we should do that also.
So you'd need to, I'm sorry, I lost track of the numbers there for a second, but we need to make sure we have enough to provide for the thirteen winter spaces during that season, right? And I assume that that the agreement that previous iterations of the board have made with Mr. Eli were only for the seasons in which that opportunity was extended to him for those ten spaces with cones?
We only did it once.
Okay, so so it's that is not on the table again at this time?
No.
So eight, eight, I'm sorry, thirteen, thirteen winter spaces out of your sixty-one is what remains. I mean, is what would be available? Yeah? Am I thinking about that correctly? So you'd have forty-eight spaces available other than winter parking overall. Is that correct?
I don't know how you came up with the number, Kathleen.
I'm saying I'm looking at the total number on Mayor's Lot and the municipal lot at sixty-one.
Sixty-eight. Thirty-seven, thirty-one, sixty-eight.
Sixty-one, and then you would need to take out the thirteen, right?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, yeah. Sixty-eight minus thirteen. Right now, we have thirteen winter parking spaces. If you if you needed to be, if you wanted to be conservative there and say you might get more, you could set that number higher, fifteen, seventeen, to make sure you have enough for winter parking.
I believe we've allocated a maximum of twenty, correct, Jeff?
That is correct. We've never come close to that.
Okay, but if 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 the re- the resolution we passed set aside twenty, right?
Uh, twenty-four.
Language of the resolution.
Twenty, it's twenty-four.
So if you've already set that aside by resolution, then those are claimed.
Uh, can I make it a suggestion here? I I don't think we have to actually decide on how this all works. I think what we need is, uh, an agreement by the board that we will work with the owners and using the, uh, and if they are willing to, um, to discuss this further, to see, um, if we can find those spaces within the two spot places that we have, the Mayor's Park or, you know, or the municipal lot right now. And if they're in agreement to work with us on that, and if the board is, uh, willing to work something out, I think we can work out how and where it's all done. But I I I think we could go on forever tonight, you know, talking about which way we should go, or should we have three next to the, uh, you know, the north side and two here or whatever. I mean, uh, we we can't get it. I don't think we should get into the weeds here. Is 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 the board willing to, you know, dedicate some spaces for this project, um, or for this owner, um, in our municipal lots? And, you know, if we can find the spaces.
In a in a lease agreement, Dave?
In in an agreement, yes. I mean, it would have to be a carefully crafted agreement with them that would state how how often they'd be using it, the hours that they'd be using it, and 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 the cost. And also what would happen if, uh, a new ownership happened, or if the offices don't work out and there's a some type of a change of use, any kind of a change of use, and more spaces would be needed, how that would work, you know? I think it all has to be in a really carefully crafted contract with them. But I think that, you know, the there's downtime on I on our lots where they're not, it's not going to be, uh, you know, because of any pressure on it, if we do it properly, you know, we have two areas. If there are only twenty people, we definitely have enough, you know, to deal with. And there's also the possibility, um, and it would take some work to to create another lot just below that where the big pile is and it's another project didn't quite get finished. But just below that, there's a huge pile of dirt that is serving no purpose other than being in the way and using up space on the highway department. And if we actually had to and we needed more spaces, that could be, you know, someone could work on that and and pave that area, and that could also be used.
So based on what you said, Dave, I am opposed to dedicated spaces. And if there is a need for signage, it would be the responsibility, the cost of the signage would be the responsibility of Forty Main Street.
Are you for though? Tell me, are you, are you? Are you willing to have, if if it's not dedicated spaces, are you willing to work something out with the owners regarding spaces in our municipal lots?
Yes, yes. Uh, my objection is dedicated.
I think that's our first step, and then we can, we can move from there to like how that works out and and the board can decide on whether option one, you dedicate spaces, this is how that would work. Um, if not, this is how it would work, you know, come up with options and on how how we could work and, you know, and assist the, uh, the parking problem here or figure it out. Is Fran, are you, are you willing to?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely willing to, um, to work with the owners. I think it's a nice, I think it's a nice, um, agreement or or at least decision between the planning board and the owners to come up with with some use of it. And I'm all for it. Uh, I think we need to work it through. Uh, and I think it's like sitting here tonight, going over space by spaces and making a lot of sense, but I'm definitely for it.
Dusty Woods?
Yeah, no, I'm definitely for working out some sort of arrangement if we have, we have the spaces. I am now unclear as to how many, but that I agree. We can discuss that at a later point with more details in front of us. So yes, I'm in agreement with that.
Justy Foley?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I I guess, uh, let me give it a little thought. Maybe we we have two representatives from the board. Again, we're not going to be here that longer, so, um, I I don't know. How how quickly does this have to be done, Matt? Or what are we looking for time-wise?
Well, um, you know, look, the, obviously, the applicant needs an answer. They need to move forward, but, you know, if there's a way that you guys can do this for them, I'm sure they're willing to take a a little bit of time to get there. So but the sooner the better. Obviously, it's a, you know, it's a commercial application. They've got work to do, so. But yeah, I mean, no, I mean, it it take the time that you need to do it right. Obviously, like you said, it has to be, you know, you gotta cross the, uh, cross the Ts and dot the Is. So the sooner the better, but, you know. Obviously, the agreement is important. You know, you'll you'll work with John and you could work with the planning board on that. As far as all the whereas statements as to what you're doing, right, why you're doing this, what you're doing, what the, you know, what the, you know, what the reasoning is behind it. Um, but as soon, uh, the sooner the better, um, but.
Right.
So I'm sure, I'm sure James and Tim would agree.
Um, but just for clarification, I mean, if we are agreeing this evening that we are willing to work with them, whether it's next week or the week after, as long as we come up with a good solution, I would think that that's the better play, regardless of timing, so that everyone is satisfied with.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any date certain with respect to a decision. The planning board has made a decision. You have to make from sixty days from closing a public hearing, you have to make a final decision, right? The planning board has made a decision. We've made a recommendation. We've handed it on to you.
And that date was what date?
Uh, we just closed it, what was it, two weeks ago?
On the eleventh?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we need to make sure that we want to make sure to keep that date in your mind, that you, you know, that I I I I think there's an argument to say that's really the final decision, even though the planning board already made the decision and they're the involved agency, but or the lead agency. You guys are now, I guess, essentially an involved agency, right? You know, under, you know, under kind of municipal law and seeker and all that, so.
Has it have, isn't that what the letter you're invested in the letter, that it now becomes our purview to work on?
I think so. I my my only point is just, I guess, someone, you could make the case that that's the final action, right? The board, the action that you guys take. So I would try to do that definitely within sixty days of our closing the hearing. I think that's safest or anybody to make any, uh, in the world that we live in, just to make sure that we, you know, stay within, um, you know, with the within village law as far as making decisions.
Excuse me, Matt.
Yep.
That's a date I'd want John first to opine on.
Yep.
Okay, so give me a bit of time to digest a little tonight. Um, I think the thing is to either appoint someone or it's only two weeks away, uh, to just, uh, punt its down down the road a little or, uh, just give me a bit of time. Uh, we'll, we'll move it ahead as soon as we can, as quickly as we can. Um, you know, I'm I'm not rushing it, obviously, but to, uh, you know, keep things rolling. I'm sure the, uh, owner has, uh, a lot of, uh, you know, invested, so I don't want to see it slowed down and everyone's for working with him. And he seems to be work, willing to work with us, so let's, we'll move it forward as quickly as we can.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your creativity and flexibility, and we're looking forward to working with you on solving the issue.
Great, okay. Thank you so much. Okay, well, uh, move along to approval of bills.
Make a motion to approve batch number six-two-six-four in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next approval of minutes, uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, minutes from ten-twenty-one-twenty-one. Do I have a second?
Which which addition, Marie? Marie asked, uh, for a later modification. Which version are we talking about now?
Dave has made a motion. Once it's seconded, I will raise my objection.
Okay.
So I have a motion, uh, to approve the meetings. I made a motion for to approve the meetings, minutes from ten-twenty-one-twenty-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have discussion?
Yes, um, I've made a recommendation to change the paragraph that starts carefully noted to a different, um, wording. Which was contained in the email that I sent out this afternoon.
And I believe the clerk reviewed the recording of the conversation of the discussion.
Yeah.
And?
Kathleen's edits are accurate in what was stated at the meeting.
Uh, so I'm I'm not sure I agree with that. I think Kathleen's original statement was the Code Update Committee and previous something of the.
Iteration, iteration of the village board.
And it's the correct, uh, statement is the Code Update Committee, the previous iteration of the of the village board and the current village board.
The current village board had not reviewed M N one before that discussion.
The current village board had on its agenda the entire set of chapters as of December of twenty-twenty. That was when the Code Update Committee turned the entire set of chapters over to the village board and completed their work.
Yes, the, that is correct. All of the chapters were were turned over. My specific reference in that section was in that portion of the meeting was to the discussion by the C U C and the previous iteration of the board as the current board. Although all of the, all of the chapters had been before the board in terms of availability, the current iteration of the board had not had discussion. So I was referring specifically to the C U C and the previous iteration of the board.
Right. However, chapter one thirty-four went before the public as part of a public hearing on September seventh of twenty-twenty-one, the entirety of chapter one thirty-four.
Yes, it did. The board did not have.
Pardon me?
Yes, it did. That was to hear the public, not for the board to discuss.
But the board had already agreed that what it put in front of the public on September seventh was what it signed off on. Chapters were only brought forward for public hearings that the current village board had had approved.
Marie, your point is taken. I am happy to accept that modification if you include my language regarding the C U C and the previous iteration of the board.
Agreed. We have an agreement.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, we're just going to add the previous and current iterations of village board.
Yes. So with that modification, I make a motion that the minutes from October twenty-first be approved with that modification.
Is there a second? One second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on.
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my mistake. There was a second change in in the October twenty-first minutes. And that was the paragraph that started Kathleen fully raised.
I need to look at your email, Marie. Can you give me a second?
Sure. The changes there, Kathleen, without seeing, without having the original minutes in front of me, is that Dave asked, think, about one property with two zoning designations. Things response.
I was fine with that.
Right. And then, um, I had pointed out, and you and I have agreed, that the ideal solution would be to survey the property, uh, subdivided into a northern, northern Pier One parcel and a southern I One parcel.
Yes, I agree that that accurately reflects the conversation.
So those are the two modifications to to the minutes of October twenty-first. So I make another motion. I'm sorry, there are two sets of changes to the October twenty-first minutes, which have just been discussed and agreed to by Kathleen and I. So I make a motion to accept that, those changes.
I will second that. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's try moving along again here. Um, approval of minutes for ten-twenty-six-twenty-one. Make a motion to, uh, approve. We have a second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Yes. My email of two fifty-seven this afternoon, I made a recommendate, recommended changes. Oh, dear. I'm looking for them.
The PM differences in the PM you want, PM you two.
Yes, um, it's a paragraph that starts M early stated. Um, what I, what I've done there is both Kathleen and I asked the question about a special use permit. And, um, John, I've added the the statement that John first said that New York State Village Law has a section on special use permits, which allows the village to specify their own criteria. A special use permit is not an, an as of right, but it gives the village board discretion in a review process and provides criteria for approval. Goes on to say, if the applicant meets the criteria, the special use permit is granted. Criteria could include community character and aesthetics. So I would recommend replacing that paragraph with what I've just read.
I don't have a problem with that.
Anyone have a problem with that?
No.
No.
Okay, do you want to make the mo-
Well, I have another. Well, I have another change to the October twenty sixth minutes.
Okay, glad you're doing it before we have a vote.
So the paragraph that starts Dave D Morandi S M Early be replaced by D Morandi. So Em Emmerily stated that obtaining a special use permit places too much burden, too much of a burden on the Village Board to review and to prove. So that the change there is is the the burden falls on the Village Board. After that conversation, Kathleen went on to make her her I don't want to say compromise, but the approach that took a little from column A and a little from column B. And and that paragraph would stay as is. So this leads into that. The and Kathleen, your comment was that the land use boards have the skills and expertise to.
I had I had made, I already put forward suggestions to Jeff in the previous to the meeting, and I think that they've been accommodated. And now you're suggesting the paragraph prior. Yeah.
Yes, I have no problem with the changes to the following paragraph. It's the it's that the burden was is placed on the Village Board to review and approve. And the skill set in the village, the the review and approval of special use permits is more the skill set of the planning board.
In my view, that's an accurate representation of the conversation.
I'm sorry.
I said, in my view, what you have just stated is an accurate representation of the conversation.
Is accurate or inaccurate?
Accurate.
Thank you, thank you. My hearing aids are not doing too well tonight. Thank you. So that's it, Dave.
Okay, well, if you'd like to make the motion then with those changes.
So I make a motion to modify the minutes from the October twenty sixth Village Board meeting with the two changes that I just wrote into the record.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the minutes for eleven four twenty one. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, make a motion to approve the minutes for eleven nine twenty one.
Second.
Discussion.
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, well, we've got, I think we should have a hard stop of nine o'clock for sure, but people are hanging on here and would like to comment, would open it up to the public now and have a hard stop at nine o'clock. Hopefully before that. Jeff, is there anybody? What's that?
Irene Piesa is raising her hand.
I'm sorry, Irene has her hand raised. Go ahead, Irene. Just state your name and address, please.
Irene Piesa, Six Paulding Avenue.
How are you?
Hi, everybody. Thank you. This has been very heavy with minutes and I'm a little spacey right now. So anyway, not a comment on what happened, but like I I'm putting in an application to use Mayor's Park for Boy Scout event, and I'm not sure if that's on the agenda or if I'm supposed to bring that up.
I had to go to the rec department and then the rec department would bring it to us, so it's not on the agenda tonight.
It's not officially on the agenda. Okay, well, I have been talking to them and it will be on the next agenda then. And so anyway, it was like a pretty thank you for letting us use the park, so. And you'll all find out about it soon enough and everybody have a good holiday and that's all. I'll I'll exit now.
Okay. Same to you. Take care. Anyone else? It looks like that's it. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good holiday. Safe holiday.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night, all.